Evening, everyone. It is Monday, September 11th, 2023. Call the meeting to order and entertain the roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Dranko.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
Bofor, Myers, and Rocky are absent.
All right. Thank you very much. Join me with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Move to item D, the approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda as printed?
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Dranko. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Section E is approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to do so.
I move approval of the August 21, 2023, regular meeting minutes and the August 28, 2023 study session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F is the introduction of our guest counsel person for the month of September here. The invitation of Councilman Bergen. Zafruel Amin.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, sir, for being here. I'll let you.
Zafruel works at Workburg College. He is the, he's in charge of the international students there. He could probably tell me how long he's been at Workburg, but it's been more than a few years. But I'll let him introduce himself the rest of the way.
Thank you, Brian. My name is Zafruel Amin, and I'm the Director of International Student Services. I have been with Workburg for the last seven years in the area as well, and it is a pleasure to be here with you all.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to interact with you, with the international students when they're welcome back. Sorry I missed those years, but thank you very much. Move into our next section, the public comments. For items not on the agenda, please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks will be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. I understand that former Mayor Infelt might have some words for us this evening.
Preachers sometimes speak fast, sometimes they don't. I'll leave it drama in the room. The privilege of being here is because we have an outstanding concert coming up, sponsored by the Workburg Community Symphony. The well-known John Hagan, who is the lead of the Texas Tenors and all the awards they've had, and they're the top act, of course, in Branson. And also, he has sung with almost every symphony in the country, and always coming home. There'll be a lot beyond symphony. It'll be kind of a little bit pop, too. But he will be performing with us on October 21st, 7:00, in Newman Auditorium in Workburg. And tickets range from 40 to 60, which for him is, I mean, he's agreed to come way, way down because we want to have everyone there. So I'm inviting everyone in the room to please come, and it's going to be a fantastic time. It's going to be a Waverly time. And I thought that as we start to open up all the invites across the area, between the newspapers, I wanted to be here first just to make sure that we, as a city, the formal part of the city, have a big embrace here of John and this wonderful effort. So October 21st, now you can get tickets through workburg.edu/symphony and/or the number 319-352-8200. So look forward to seeing everyone there, and it's good to be back here, too. It's good to see everybody, and thank you, Adam, for the nice words.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing no one else rise, we'll move forward with section H, the consent calendar. Item 1 is a pay request from Studio Mili for the Waverly Public Library Expansion and Renovation Project for $27,733. Item 2 is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Waverly Water Pollution Control Facility Improvements for $85,674.31. Item 3 is a pay request from Denver Underground and Grady Incorporated for the Elm Street and 29th Avenue, Southwest, Southeast Water Main Loops for $105,751.43. Item 4 is a Class C Retail Alcohol License Renewal Application for Frederick Sips and Eats. Item 5 is a Class C Retail Alcohol License Renewal Application for the Other Place, too. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Any discussion?
Your Honor. I would just like to note that for Frederick Sips and Eats, this application affords two purposes, and that is one for renewal and one for change of ownership.
Okay. Thank you very much for that dual note. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Next section is regular business. Item number 1 is Resolution 23-133, a resolution awarding the downtown brick sidewalk repairs Fall 2023 Project to Wells Hollow Landscaping of Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-133, awarding the downtown brick sidewalk repairs Fall 2023 Project to Wells Hollow Landscaping of Waverly, Iowa, for the amount of $14,869.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion, if any.
Were these the ones that were installed in '18?
Yeah, they should have been at that time.
Just, I guess, concerned that, you know, is this every five years that we're going to have to do these? I'm not a huge fan of brick where it get frost heave, especially where people walk.
I assume the issue is that they've, they settled?
So, oh, sorry. So maybe half are in the newer area and half are in older sections, like around the Veterans' Tribute or over on the east side of Burshang. Where we tend to have issues are in the corners because it's hard to get the sub base and see them compacted in the corners. So that's where we tend to notice those days.
By corners, you mean corners of the square, of the, of those square?
Right, the square panels, brick panels in those corners, it can be very difficult to get it compacted, and that's where we tend to see a little bit of the settlement show up. Just like with sidewalks and head ramps, yeah, you know, we, you know, we had a set of gear rotation for inspection, and we would probably expect to identify some areas that could need some attention. It's been a while since we've looked at the downtown area, and this was kind of a good opportunity to look at some of the newer stuff and older stuff. We had a couple of citizens call in expressing some concern, and so we decided to look at the entire downtown area rather than just have it being complete for them.
Every city, at least in the northern part, has issues with these, and I'm just wondering at some point, I think it would make sense just to look at stamped concrete for decoration purposes, but I think this will be a recurring kind of deal.
Well, I understand the theory behind is the bricks are meant to be easier to pull up if you need to get at, like, the pipes and the whatnot underneath. I am a little concerned that the estimate was about, I mean, there was only one bid and it was about 50% above the estimate. Is that inflation? Is that just low unemployment and not being able to find people to bid on this? What do we think is responsible for that?
Having a good measure of comparison, I believe the last time we did some of this work was after the '08 flood. So it's been, been quite a while.
Too few data points?
Yes, there, I like that. Too few data points, right. And some of it is labor intensive, as you can imagine, and they may look at that and decide that's worse than what we anticipated, and we may see a different side than they see. And so they do this a little more for a living than obviously we do, so our estimates may have been low based on some of what they're seeing. That has to be torn up and redone, so.
Well, I'm sure part of it also is we only had one bid, so.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, Resolution 23-133 is approved. Item 2 is Resolution 23-134, a resolution awarding the Citywide Asphalt Patching Fall 2023 Project to Blacktop Service Company of Humboldt, Iowa.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-134, awarding the Citywide Asphalt Patching Fall 2023 Project to Blacktop Service Company of Humboldt, Iowa, for the amount of $32,163.69.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any.
You got a tight bid range there.
Yeah, exactly. We had, we had more bidders at times, so you get, you can know those numbers are all really close. More data points, as we like to say.
Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, Resolution 23-134 is approved. Item 3 is Resolution 23-135, a resolution approving a temporary easement agreement with Century Link for temporary relocation of communication lines from the Bremer Avenue Bridge to proposed locations. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-135, approving a temporary easement agreement with Century Link for temporary relocation of communication lines from the Bremer Avenue Bridge to proposed locations.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Dranko. Counsel discussion, if any.
So I'm trying to make sense of what I'm seeing here, and we're basically moving this about half a block south for the crossing. How much of this is underground and how much of this is over? I mean, it looks like there's some suspended stuff, but I can't tell if it's moving underground.
The green is underground.
Okay.
And then through the alley is underground.
So that red.
Across the river is in the pole.
On a pole.
And then you get to the other side, and I think it's, I'm not sure if they're going to do a pole or below ground. It depends on what they use that bank for, for doing the project.
Okay. So the parts that are underground, so the green and the red, is that, are they going to be digging up our nice alleyways, or are they using existing conduit?
I don't anticipate them digging it up. They'll, I think, look at boring it.
Okay. But they'll still, they'll, they'll be making basically new holes, but hopefully not.
Not big ones.
Not big ones, okay, well.
But they have intentions to go underground and then pop up over the river, and then I think by four queens, they're also underground, right? I mean, the parking lot area.
Right, right on the edge of the property, is what I understand.
And then once, they're supposed to reinstall it on the bridge when the bridge is being built, they'll add new conduits specifically for Century Link to use, and then in time to man, when it's available, they should relocate that and take down the old line.
I'm, I'm just very protective of our nice, like, Bremer Avenue went through a lot of work to make that nice, and every time someone digs in it, it makes me sad.
Thinking about when we need repairs done, just pave it over first because then they'll come and rip it up. Fresh concrete lasts so long, and then they go and bust it up and repair it, so it might be the key. If you want a terrain, go out and wash your car.
Yeah.
Very similar now, if you're correct.
We can only have a skim coat at least.
Something. Make it look like it's new.
Yeah. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, Resolution 23-135 is approved. Item number four is Resolution 23-136, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Waverly and KLM Engineering for consulting, inspection, and design services for the West Water Tower Rehabilitation Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-136, approving a professional services agreement between the City of Waverly and KLM Engineering for consulting, inspection, and design services for the West Water Tower Rehabilitation Project for a not-to-exceed amount of $85,232.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion.
Good to see this on there. That's starting to look rough there, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get this done, and then we bought it forward and it's ready to go and open this, bring it, see some action.
That, the insides of those, is that normal? Is that, is that a normal, like, 40, 50-year deal to have to do the insides of the tower?
Normally a tower, you know, it's as good as you clean the surface, you know? That's what comes to any painting. They were epoxy'd in 2012 on the inside, am I correct?
I, yeah, a few was asking about the, about the work on the inside. The, I know for sure the north and west towers, the exterior was sandblasted all the way down through the metal, primed and repainted. The west tower, they just cleaned and recoded the exterior. As far as the interior work, I, I'm not prepared.
There was some touch upon it that were, but yes, there's some, um, tins on this tower, let's call it that. And with those, some of the installations get compromised in the inside, so you should get longer longevity out of the, the use of the interior. But it caused some of this fall, some of the fixtures on the inside are basically causing a lot of the damage and the rust. And so, yes, you should get 30 years out of coating, but it's as good as the, you know, the interior.
I'd like to look that up in the email, mail out.
I'm sure all those towers complicate a project like this, too.
Just going to throw this out there, pay attention to the second page of the, it's actually the third page after the cover, but second page of the KLM report, especially to the library for a Quiz Bowl type stuff of how many gallons of water it holds. Could be useful to win a prize at the brewery sometime. Just saying.
One more question on that. Were we duplicating the design that's already there on this?
I don't know if there's a design on there, is there?
The Hawk.
I think it says Waverly.
The Hawk.
I see.
There's a Go Hawk on there.
It's kind of blended in with the rust.
That'll be something that will be brought up in the specifications and the design period, like 68.
So not decided yet?
Not decided.
They've got some award-winning towers, it looks like, so.
So they'll look up and they're driving it everywhere.
You'd know what city you're in, you'd have to look at it.
I didn't think about, where am I at?
I'd really hope if cost isn't prohibitive to, to get the Waverly Welcome Home logo out there. It would be a wonderful place for it, be a nice big sign for it.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, Resolution 23-136 is approved. Item 5 is the first reading of Ordinance 1131, Ordinance Amending Sections of Chapter 82 Public Property and Chapter 104 Public Offenses of the Waverly Code of Ordinances. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1131, Amending Sections of Chapter 82 Public Property and Chapter 104 Public Offenses of the Waverly Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Schneider. Counsel discussion.
Can you talk us through this one?
Sure. The first one's pretty easy because the bridges don't, aren't existing anymore, and so we had to put in the new ones. And that's really all I did with the first one. And then the misdemeanor penalty, cities don't put people in jail very often for violating the Code of Ordinances because it, it takes time and effort to do that. If you're going to do that, you might have more jury trials you might have. And you can do about every violation there is under state code, which allows you then to, to shift it over to the county attorney who can actually, is doing that often and able to do that. The other thing is, if you do that, there's, there's a risk of having jail time. They can actually ask for a public defender, which gets charged to the city. And that's the biggest cost that you look at, is the, is that public defender cost that could be imposed on the city for, for, for doing that. So most, the city attorney or places that I know are smaller communities like us, we'd rather leave the, the state charges to be done with the ones we're going to ask for jail time and just stick with the, the code. The other thing I changed was the misdemeanor penalty, which before was talked about in a, not less than $50, but not in excess of $500. There's actually a minimum of 110, I think. And so we just prescribed the section 903.11A, and then that will, can change as it, if, if they change it, if they make it more than that. So they, if they change the law in the state level, we're just going to go along with that. So it just raises that minimum to 110, I think, rather than 50. The carrying weapons is really just rewriting and incorporating the state code into the possession of firearms under that, one of '08 and '09.
So that's, I suppose that's what I'm not clear on. I understand the '08, but I'm not really sure what the '09 is for. Because, I mean, maybe it's, just my understanding, we don't have the ability to prohibit any of these things, so I'm not sure why we have to put something in the law reminding people that we don't have the ability to prohibit it.
That's true. Since we had mimicked the former 724.5, I thought if we were going to do anything, we would just replace it with what the legislature's passed. Like, you could probably just take it out.
So we could delete that, and it wouldn't change things at all?
Right, if you did not pass that particular provision. The last one is the one that I did not put in, the prior one about 18-year-olds, and I wanted to get the exact language, and that exact language makes it pretty unlikely that people are going to do this very often. They have to tell the tram carrier, they have to have two, you have to have people watching them, they have to do training for sexual harassment. It's, it's, under, it just really doesn't make it much sense to actually try to have somebody under 18 serving alcohol in an establishment unless that's all you have. Some of the smaller communities, maybe, where it's a mom and pop and a, and a child that works for them, it might be worth it. Not very often it's going to be worth it for folks that work and, that have a place in, in that way.
Are those requirements in the state code?
Yes, straight from the state, state code.
So we're basically just copying and passing the state code into our ordinance?
That one is, yeah.
Any others, Bill? Or is that, I mean, that rounds it out? Okay. Anything further from counsel? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Out of vote of four to zero and three absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1131 is approved. Brings us to item 6, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1127, adopting various changes to Chapter 105, Sections 105.1 to 105.7 of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105.1 through 105.7. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of third and final reading of Ordinance 1127, adopting various changes to Chapter 105, Sections 105.1 through 105.7 of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105.1 through 105.7.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1127 is approved. Brings us to item 7, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1128, adopting various changes to Chapter 88, street closings for block parties with the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of, I think it should be the third and final reading of Ordinance 1128, adopting various changes in Chapter 88, street closings for block parties of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any.
Catch that change, correct?
I'm sorry?
You catch that change.
Says first in the packet.
Oh, yes.
She doesn't have it in front of her.
Yes, I did.
We don't want to have to go through that again.
And I copy and paste.
It's all good.
I'm not sure what happened, but thank you.
All fine. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1128 is approved. Item 8 is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1129, repealing Chapter 96, property tax exemption of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Entertain a motion.
Okay, I will, uh, there we go. I'll move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1129, repealing Chapter 96, property tax exemption of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Schneider. Counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1129 is approved. Brings us to item number nine, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1130, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Code of Ordinances with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits. Take a motion.
I will move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1130, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Code of Ordinances with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Dranko. Counsel discussion.
I suppose for anyone who hasn't been paying attention, these are the third and final readings of a number of ordinances that we've been talking about for the last few weeks, so that's why it's going through so quickly.
Hearing nothing further?
We promise we have read them.
Yes. Three times.
Three times.
At least. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1130 is approved. Item 10 is the first reading of Ordinance 1132, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of property located at 717 West Bremer Avenue from R4, multiple-family residential transitional district to C1, commercial district, and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion there.
I would move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1132, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of property located at 717 West Bremer Avenue from R4, multi-family residential transitional district to C1, commercial district, and setting a public hearing for September 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers at City Hall.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, just for the record, it's the St. Andrews Church.
This is the old St. Andrews Church, right?
Well, I think you all know that I usually, in these rezoning requests, set a fairly high bar, or I'll vote in favor of it, but I'd have to say that this one clears that bar by a significant margin. I mean, I was surprised it wasn't already zoned commercial when I looked at it, but it's a property that definitely fits in with the commercial development. There are commercial developments around it, the properties, um, they're, it makes sense for that to be a commercial development rather than residential housing development. I have not received any complaints from any of the neighbors, any comments from the neighbors about questioning why that should be rezoned. It just, it, in my mind, it in my mind, it's kind of a slam dunk, so these are the ones that are pretty easy.
And planning and zoning agrees with you before that we're there, so.
Yep.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of four to zero and three, absent the first reading of Ordinance 1132 is approved. Next up is Section J, Reports from Boards and Commissions. I've got, first one is Waverly Historic Preservation Commission Minutes of June 26, '23. Second one is Waverly Leadership Services Commission Minutes of July 20th of '23. And the third one is the Waverly Senior Center Calendar for September of 2023, received into the record. Staff updates to Section K, Mr. Browner.
Yes, sir, I think we have at least one left.
Thank you.
Uh, this Wednesday is the United Way Day of Caring. We've got a few projects in store for folks. We have some people picking up trash. We have a group that will be helping to stain Kids Kingdom. And we have members of the Exchange Club and some local youth that will be planting trees at Cedar River Park. These trees that are being planted this time around is actually phase three, or tree planting phase at Cedar River Park. This particular phase was donated by some hospital staff. Trees Forever had a match with that and then we also had a DNR grant. The first two phases were paid for by, one by Wells Hollow and one by Keats Nursery. We've actually already got started on phase number four. Luckily, this last weekend, members of city staff and Trees Forever went and worked the concession stand at Cedar River Park, so we were able to take some proceeds from that, thanks to the Quanis Club for including us on that. And then we also had a tip jar as well, or a donation jar, if you will, that made about an extra $100 to go towards phase four. So we're hoping to complete phases four and five this spring. Each phase is 20 trees. We'll be leaving at 100 trees at Cedar River Park. I've got four tonight.
Thank you.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
Yeah, that tip jar was, between Paul and I, we really pushed that on, on Sunday, so I'll have a comment about that later. Council comments, Mr. Bergen?
Oh, I've got a few. So first, I have information that I got from the Historic Preservation Commission about a fundraiser for the Stewart event house. You can eat at Applebee's tomorrow from 11:00 AM to close. They have a menu that you can select from and 50% of proceeds will go to the Stewart Event House fundraising. So if you want to support some of our local history, there's an opportunity there. I'm going to show this around. The second thing is, kind of my big excitement is this weekend is the Iowa Geocachers Organization Annual Event Hike and Seek in Town. So on Saturday, if you see a bunch of people, you know, on the bike trail, crumpling through the woods, looking under bridges and things, don't panic. They're just geocachers. We're very grateful to a lot of our local donors. First Bank, Dale Howard, Veridian, Crowdaddy, the Chamber of Commerce, Red Fox, Hy-Vee, Elsal, Nestle, Wardburg, the Health Center, the Fair Board have all donated to this event, so I'm very help, thankful for all of their support. Then finally, anyone who wants to discuss city council business or geocaching, please join me at the Port House.
Sir?
Got nothing to add?
All right. Mr. Dranko?
Sometime you're just going to have to explain to me what geocaching actually is.
Maybe over beer.
Maybe over beer, yes. I, I have nothing, Mr. Mear.
That's okay, thank you. So approval?
Well, again, thank you for inviting me. This is an experience for the first time joining the city council, so I'm soaking it in.
That's okay. There's a lot to absorb, so we'll see you next week as well. So, Mr. Kangas?
Nothing.
Nothing. I had a couple of things here, just to save the date for the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast on the 15th of October at the 4H Building. Again, those programs, just like the Quanis Club, goes all right back into our community, so save the date for that. And then just a memorial mention here. Today is September 11th and 22 years ago, one of our Waverly locals, Karen Kincaid, lost her life in a day tax that day. So just giving a, a mention of notice there. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Kangas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.